Ready.
Oh, man, it can be really long.
All right, everybody. It's Wednesday, April seventeenth at nine AM. Brad, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, being invisible with liberty and justice for all.
And so we have Chris Cookston here. We had a little break in the amount of time when we were doing these, but he's been doing the prayers in the for the meetings and he's back and he's working on building that calendar for the future. And so please come on up. This is something we we did for quite a while and we've had a little break recently, but decided to have Chris back and he's from the Prineville Community Church.
She said.
And he's actually the gentleman that helps us manage the the calendar of the people that do it. So.
Yes.
Very quiet. This one will be better. Sarah told me this was a real long.
By the way, have if have your pastor or your elder contact me and we'll add them to the list in the schedule. I'm having a hard time hearing back from anybody lately. So.
Might have to be doing all year.
Yeah. Yeah, probably so. Let's pray. Almighty God in heaven, we thank you, oh Lord, for creating us and putting us into this world that you've created. We thank you, Father, for the United States of America. Remember, we remember that you set up nations and you tear down nations. You've poured your blessings upon our nation. We thank you for the state of Oregon. We thank you for Kirk County and all the citizens here. We ask today, Father, that you would grant wisdom to these commissioners and those who work with them and also every citizen gathered here today. We pray, Father, for all of the employees of our civil government, both Creek County and Prineville, that you would help them to serve the citizens, that they would protect the afflicted, that they would uphold justice to the best of their ability, that they would protect their own integrity and uphold your law. We love you, Father. I pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, we have a public comment here before the meeting. Does anybody have anything to say? Let's start here in the room and then we'll move on to online. If you got something online, just do the little hand raise on there. Okay.
Since we have a new crowd, let's remind them that they can call me as well each.
Oh, yes. And something new that we've done is that you can now comment on each different item. Just kind of give us a sign while we're going over that. If that's something that you want to weigh in on, same thing on the on the on the phone, just give us the hand up. All right, anything, anything new on the consent agenda? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and always excited to have positive stories here and we have some recognition to Kim Kim Herbert for her fifteen years of service here. I don't know if everybody. She's.
Amy's on her way.
Oh, should we wait for Amy? Okay. Pretty good at dragging it out.
Just talk really slow.
As.
I know, I know.
All morning, guys. There's a tip jar at the door. Well, I think I can talk about him for hours and all the things she's done. So let's just start with four H and OSU and all the things she does and all the people she gets to talk to. I'm sure people here are familiar with the fair and how contentious the fair can be. Because parents are always wanting their kids to succeed and there's always different judges and different things and Kim gets to manage all of that. Not all of it, but she's has her finger in all of it. How about that?
My role's kind of changed over the years and now Samara's job to manage all of that and she does a great job. I'm honored to support her and help her out.
Yeah.
But it's always fun to see the what's exciting to me is to see the kids when I first started and now they're grown and have kids of their own. So they're in.
Yeah. And she's always the one that bugs me to get my sponsorships in for the fair that I'd never get on timely.
It's the heartbeat of the office.
Yes, hundred percent.
I was very fortunate to work with Kim for six years on the egg or the OSU Extension Advisory Council. You are extremely competent at your job. You make it look very, very easy. There is not an event involved with children that I have not seen your face somewhere. So you can say someone else runs it, but I know who's in the background and we really appreciate you and we will really miss you.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to take anything away from Samara because Samara does a very good job also, but I think it's a really good team over there. And that you guys back each other up and that like yeah, like Suzie said, whenever I see something with four H, you're there hustling around, getting everything done and making sure everybody has a great experience, no matter what their opinion is.
Well, we might need to.
What?
We have a recognition for you, but we might. We're a little late on our delivery. So maybe we go to the next.
Should we just bump over to the budget committee and talk about that and then?
And then we don't.
Then we can come back and we can embarrass you twice. Does that sound like a good plan?
We're just breaking you through the coals. That's what we do. Yeah.
All right. See. Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Report. Come on, come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning, Debbie.
So I've learned that you have to speak right into this, right? All right. Deb Shaw, Operations Manager at the Prineville Creek County Chamber of Commerce for the record. So it has been a lot of fun at the chamber since last fall. We've done a lot of cool things. I know you guys have been kind of watching and and there's all kinds of fun changes. I'm going to kind of talk about this morning about the current status and kind of the accomplishments we've had over the last six months. And just a little bit about where we're going. And then I'm going to turn it over to Kim and she's going to talk to you about the tourism portion of the chamber. So. Um, yes, please. Thank you. So new staff, new positions. We have Operations Manager, Membership Development Coordinator and Administrative Assistant. New financials and a new budget. We embarked on a feasibility study, I believe it was in August of last year. And some of the things that came out of that were just the budgeting process we were using and we hired a gentleman to help us prepare a new budget this year and we're super excited about that. It actually split it into the individual departments you see there. We've got an overall company budget and financials for the chamber. We've got operations budget, financials, chamber budget, financials, and of course, the newly formed tourism budget and financials. The other really great thing that we've done, and this is centered around our team, is the chamber has never really had an HR system, shall we say, or an HR department. And it was time. We've grown. There's more of us. And it's really, really important, as you guys know, to take care of your internal first, right? So what we did is we embarked on looking for some different human resources companies and what would best serve us. We looked originally at an all encompassing plus payroll. And then we decided that that really wasn't for us. We would like to stay and do our own payroll. We still have an individual that does that for us. But we found what's called Bambi, which is an HR service. And they do all of our policy, our policy review, job description creation review, employee cabinet for documents. This is something we've never had, a secure location for our employees to have their information stored and a place that their manager can also access and put things in, you know, their reviews, things like that. We've always been paper. So we are in the twentieth century these days. It's pretty exciting. Custom programs and tracking. So that is really the training program. We have never had a robust training program. And there are specific things, as you guys know, Oregon requires, federal government requires that we go through with our employees that we train them on yearly and we track. Bambi does that all for us and reminds us when that next section is up for review. Management support. Any kind of difficult discussions I can have with Bambi before I have it with an employee. My board can have that amongst an individual, our HR manager at Bambi, and then have that with me or an employee. This is a really, really great resource. Then, once again, the job descriptions for all employees. We had not really had what I would call a job description for each position at the chamber. There has been job descriptions. They just weren't robust. Let's just say that. And so this has been a really fun time to look at those and make them what they needed to be. Because also, again, there's regulations around those and how they should look. So then being able then to create those, send them to Bambi, get their input. And then, like I said and referenced earlier, they would also make that for us if we wanted. Employee agreements for all employees. Confidential staff reporting. Bambi has a location that our staff can go to at any given time and report confidentially an issue they're having, which is something that is very vital for employees to have that outlet, right? We all feel sometimes like we just need to talk to somebody, talk through something. So that is that confidential staff reporting. So that is a huge accomplishment for us is putting that into place. So current status and accomplishments, again, continuing. Information technology IT support. We have never had an IT administrator. We have never had a whole Google Drive suite. What we had was a OneDrive and it was unfortunately didn't work well for us. This has given us the opportunity for each of us to have our own sign on, for each of us to go in and have our own files, but also accessible to each other because Kim and I were so closely together. It's nice that she can go in and save something and do work on a Google Sheet. I can do the same thing and it's a live document and across the board in our office. But we also hired a gentleman to take care of all of our IT needs for us, which has been fantastic. Him nor I should be messing in computers. As wonderful and creative as we are, computers are wretched. So we just want to use them and not make them. Yes, you're welcome. Yeah, they're awful. Membership. We hired a new Membership Development Coordinator, as I noted earlier in the the program here, and Kelsey Lubers has been with us since the beginning of September and she is fantastic with people. I just can't say enough wonderful things about her. She's off to Hawaii doing fun things today. But she has worked very, very diligently to connect with our members. And this has been part of our focus, really having that internal staff so that Membership Development Coordinator can get out of the office and talk to people, which is what we should be doing, right? Seeing their needs, seeing what they need. That is also vital with what we do there at the chamber. Our members are our heart and core. So she has worked diligently on that addition of new members, and this is an increase from July one twenty-two, June thirty twenty-three, four hundred and twenty-six, and then seven one twenty-three, which is our our fiscal year we're in right now. We're up to four hundred and eighty, which is super exciting, you guys. That's just, I can't even tell you, I'm over the moon for the work that Kelsey's done and and the team. It's been a holistic approach and it's wonderful. That also brings a member revenue increase. We embarked on last fall, talking about doing a small member increase. We hadn't done one since two thousand nineteen and then we all know what happened the following year, right? We all went into COVID and we felt our members' needs and our their concerns and their issues, not many of them not opened, many of them not functioning, their businesses, you know, just really trying to sustain. So at that point, we have not and decided not to do any kind of member increases until this last fall. And we decided, you know, it's probably time. We're going to be offering some more services and it was a great time to start that. And that started February of this year. And I I haven't heard that there's much scuttle about any negativity, but always if you if you have some, share it with me, what I can do for you. But that's been a great positive item too this year for and success for the chamber. So looking ahead. As you guys know, we have all kinds of fun events coming up. The chamber, first and foremost, the Stampede Street Party is now part of the tourism. But myself and my team are going to be supporting Kim in that effort and that's super exciting. Fourth of July fireworks. As you guys know, because you're a partner with us and please thank you guys so much again for always thinking of us in the community. This is a partnership with the chamber, Republic Services, the city, the county, and our Parks and Rec District here. We have all pooled together and provided a fireworks show for our community every year. And once again, that will be happening. So I'm super excited about that. Thank you guys again for your support. Moon Fest support. Again, a tourism project and event. However, we're going to be supporting him in that. That's super exciting. That's a brand new one for us. And you kind of might see it morph here in a little bit, but I think that it's going to be a great event in the fall that we're super excited about. Kim's going to maybe share a little bit more about that with you. Candy Crawl, which you know is a wonderful community event with all of our kids. That also is kind of expanding this year. I don't want to let the cat out of the bag. Small Business Saturday. That's that Saturday after Thanksgiving. And we go right into the fun Christmas parade and there's some new fun things I hope coming for the parade to to offer the community and just to be able to do just a little more and make that evening just a little more impactful. It already is wonderful with Christmas and the pines. You know, we partner with them and all of those fun things, but just kind of carrying over that cheer from the parade to maybe the fairgrounds and some of that. So looking forward to that. Future events. We are going to be doing a golf tournament. That's going to be spring of twenty twenty-five. That's going to be a fundraising event. And we're kind of excited about that. Our hope is to make perhaps enough profit to share back with our community, a local nonprofit. That's kind of our goals is to be better partners going forward and to contribute back to our community that is always a part of us and giving to us, you know, yearly. So that's on the horizon. We're super excited about that. We've got some great ideas. We're partnering with Meadow Lakes on that. And then the big fun more stuff, right? Big mud fun more stuff is employee growth and education. Because we're a new team, we have a lot of things still to learn. And so I hope that this year that is our our potential and our growth and everything comes from those trainings that we've just not been able to do in the past. And it's time that we learn our softwares in and out to be able to better serve our members. Office and visitor center remodel. You guys, this is the biggest one I can think of. I am so excited about this. I can hardly stand it. You can probably see it on my face. The addition of office space for Kim and I, we currently share that one long office up there at the the railroad building. And our offices will be separated. But in turn, our ladies out front are going to have a different kind of a pod structure, which is going to be, I think, much more inviting to our individuals. And finally, some ADA accessibility. We have, as you know, have the the walkway out front and the ramp out front for ADA needs. However, the rest of our office is not structured that way. Kim's going to talk about some fun news, exciting, that's going to relate to this, but this remodel is going to put together a counter for individuals with different needs than myself. The door and a seating area. We have, as you know, kind of an aging community sometimes, and they do come see us. And it's really difficult for them to not have any place to rest. Once they've come up the stairs or the ramp. This new remodel will offer them a space to relax, take a minute, get a glass of water and and just rest because it sometimes is a lot to get up our stairs. Sometimes it's a lot to get up the ramp. Sometimes it's a lot for me. So this will allow a much more welcoming area and with that, a larger retail area. So our hope is to kind of up what we can carry in that area.
So are you you're not expanding the footprint. You're just moving things inside.
Yeah, it's cool. Yeah, it's exciting. I mean, I can't tell you. It's wonderful. And so with the remodel, we're going to do some retail growth. That will allow us to have a little more revenue in-house there for the visitor center and and really kind of start growing that visitor center. We have some really cool stuff if you haven't been up there. But it's time that we have a little more for our community and our people that are visiting us. And that's all part of that. The visitor center pamphlets and information materials beginning to really make those professional looking, have a real printed document rather than what we've been doing in-house for, I don't know, however many years. So that's going to be a new change up there and just a whole new facelift. Pretty excited. So my focus and our team's focus and the board's focused over the next year is really catering to our membership. Now that we have the internal staff, we can really spend the time that we need with our members. It's it's vital. They are our backbone and it's time that we ramp up some programs. So the ambassador program has been with us a very long time, but it has kind of fallen off the radar, shall we say. So over the next year, Kelsey and myself and the board's going to be working on an ambassador program that's a little more robust than it's ever been. Some pretty exciting things there. Membership retention program. It's vital that we keep what we have, right? And continue to call them and touch base. And are you getting what you need? What are you needing? Do you need education? Do you need trainings? Do you need support with your social media? What is it that you're needing that we can help with and provide? So that's really part of that program. We've got some fun ideas about that. A new program, a loyalty program. So those members that have been with us for a very long time, and there's many of you that have been with us a very long time. It is time that we give back to you. So our loyalty program is not quite identified and outlined, but we're working on that with our board. We have some really fun ideas about how to really incentivize our members to keep with us and stay with us. And it's time that if you've been with us for five or 10 years, you have a reward for that. And I'm not sure what that's going to look like yet. But we're we're just in the early stages of that, but it's super fun to think about giving back again to our members. And then education. Once again, what do our members need? What are they lacking? Is it is it business practices? Is it budgeting? Is it social media? Again, what can we do and what can we provide to our members? So that's the next goal for the year is educating and what they need and hopefully bringing that to them. Any questions?
Oh, great presentation.
Oh, thank you, guys. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to my friend Kim.
And I and I gotta say, I've been to some chamber events lately and I think you guys are just doing a great job. I've been just having really positive experiences there.
Yes, it's been such a great time.
Hello, I'm Kim Mollmark, Director of Tourism. So as you guys know, I embarked on this new role back in the fall. And basically going through, you can scroll up, just letting you guys know what I'm working on. Sorry, scroll down the other way. The other up, the other up. So just letting you guys know kind of what the work that I have been focused on is. So we right now have staff devoted to tourism. It is myself and then I have a rare Americor member, Taylor, that is working beside me. We're a two-person team, but it's been really strong and really great. So education and training that I have done as well as Taylor over the last year. These are the list of all the conferences that we've been to. I won't go through every single one. There's more coming up as well. But we're always in the middle of things. We're always going to kind of the leadership in the state for tourism to figure out what are the trends? What should we be doing? How can we do them better? Current status and accomplishments. So we've got very strong partnerships with both Travel Oregon and Visit Central Oregon. I can tell you when I first started back in two thousand and eighteen, they kind of knew who Prineville was. And now not only do they know who we are, they are partnering alongside us. We have received grants from both of those organizations. We have received sponsorships from both of those organizations. Regular support. As a matter of fact, Travel Oregon was in town last week and I basically took them on a four-hour tour of Prineville and all the different things we have because they hear about it, but sometimes they don't get to see it. So that was exciting. Recognition in terms of our community. So I was asked to be a speaker at a conference talking about how do you bridge the gap between rural and urban? So when you're example, for us, Bend always gets all of the attention. So basically it was talking like, what had what have I done to make sure that Prineville is on the map as well and that we stay good partners? I am part of a tourism leadership academy for two thousand and twenty-four. So that is done through Orla, Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association. Coordinated guided tour for the Travel Oregon team, Destination Destination Management Studio. I'm hoping to get a press release out on this that can explain it more, but basically Travel Oregon picks a region every year to spend a two to three-year. I don't know what to call it, but basically for two to three years, they get together, they figure out what are the needs? How can we help this area grow? How can we protect this area from not being overrun by tourism? How do we do things right? But the main thing we are seeing for Central Oregon is their goal is take pressure off of the more trafficked, high-use areas and spread it out among the region. And then we had a booth at the Governor's Conference on Tourism. That is the largest conference in the state. There were over five hundred people and Prineville got lots of shout outs in front of the entire group for the work that we're doing and for the dark sky specifically. Current status and accomplishments, grants. So Deb was talking about the ADA accessibility. That is a grant through Travel Oregon that we received. Visit Central Oregon. We just were notified last week and I just got permission via text this morning to share that we did get a grant from them. That is going to help fund an event in the fall. That's the Moon Fest that Deb talked about. East Cascade Works supplied us with the grant for training and education. So that is helping pay for any conferences or trainings we go to, and that's for the entire staff, not just myself. And then Travel Oregon is funding a recreation map that we will have created by the fall. We have a lot of singular maps, so we'll hand someone a brochure on Chimney Rock or Walton Lake. Well, this is one big shiny fancy map that will highlight all of the areas in the region so that when people come to Prineville, we can hand them one document and then they can figure out where they want to go. So I'm excited about that. I was super excited that they agreed to fund it one hundred percent. And then events and tours. This list continues to grow. This is not even what it is, but the example Wanderlust Tours, they had a group last week that came to Prineville during Dark Sky Week. They have another group coming. They are continuing to grow those. They started with just one last year and right now they're at three. Psycho Oregon is bringing a bunch of people to the prairie in June. In a Landscape, it's a concert series that's coming to Wind Down Ranch in June. Wind Down Ranch is doing a farm-to-table. We have the Sheriff's Mounted Posse has two different events that are bringing people in from outside of the area. So as we hear and see about these things that are happening, Explore Prineville and myself and Taylor, we're being the resource. Like, what do you need? You're coming to town. How could we help you? Are there resources here that we can assist you with rather than you bringing them with you from your other city? So that's a lot of the work that we're doing there. And then programs that we're doing is we have the tourist discount lanyard program. That just launched about two weeks ago. We're seeing a lot of traffic. We're getting phone calls, emails, people coming in wanting it. A tourist comes into our office or calls our office, we supply them with the lanyard. It has a QR code when they scan that. It lists fifty different businesses in our community that will welcome them and give them either a discount or a percentage off or something like that. We're continuing to grow that. Our website launched yesterday. Did everybody get a chance to see it? Super exciting. Exploreprinville.com. The outdoor recreation map that I talked about, the tourist discount program is on there again because it's that great. And then we'll go down. Again, just back to the recognition that we've been getting, this is the most exciting thing to me is we started this project just back in the fall of really trying to put a focus and an emphasis on tourism and the work that we're doing. of really trying to put a focus and an emphasis on tourism and the work that we're doing. And we, like I said, Governor's Conference on Tourism highlighted Prineville. Travel Oregon has had us in their newsletter multiple times. That goes out to tourists. That's not just the industry newsletter, but the one that's going to people looking to travel. Visit Central Oregon, their newsletter has listed Prineville multiple times, and that has been a project that I've been working on for six years. We are getting recognized. They are highlighting us finally. The World Atlas, we were listed as seven best places to retire in Oregon. KTVZ is doing news stories on us. In the past, it has only been Central Oregon Daily News, but we got their attention. And then last Sunday, we had basically a cover story in the Bend Bulletin that had a lot of positive in it. So the article was positive. Don't read the comments on the paper online because people like to say things, but we're truly, we're getting that message out there that we're not looking to overrun our community. We want to protect our community, protect our environment. Our culture and our heritage are super important, but we also want to share that. And so that's the work that we're doing. That's why we've been getting a lot of the positive feedback. Is we're trying to go about it the right way and make sure that we're not overrunning our area, but we're protecting it. So. Any questions?
No, you both did a very good presentation.
Thank you.
So Kim, I'm going to share an email with you because I received this request, we request from Janet Brown. Janet is with a viewpoint. It's hosted by Dennis Quaid. That has asked me to do things with for them, but that's not really my forte. So maybe I will send that to you and we can work together. Yeah, I've never heard of him. So have you? Well, they tour America and find the best places to live in America, says Discover America. And it's not like the viewpoint that the other viewpoint that's on television, I think.
Or the viewpoint intended.
Or the viewpoint. No, this is a production company that wants to do a movie. Kind of what you're doing. So I will share that with you.
Yeah, great job. All right, back to the.
Yeah, let's go back to, let's go back.
We just started over because I think some new people came in. Well, if you weren't here earlier, we're recognizing Kim Herbert for 15 years of service at the OHU Extension Office, and we've been extremely lucky to have her. And we would like you to come up so we can present you with a plaque as well as. Oh, please do. You gonna tell them or should I?
Way back in the day when I first started, we had our banquet auction that was in the Clover Building. So it was smaller venue and everything. Well, our auctioneer didn't show up. He was busy doing something else. And so Seth stepped in to be our auctioneer. And that was like one of my fondest memories. Seth up there auctioning off all the baskets and stuff, and he did a great job.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but I did not.
It was fun.
Top five most embarrassing moments. I assume all you have to say is like da-da-da-da-da and money. And that's not at all how it works. It's a much more difficult craft than I originally thought. And yeah, it was, it was a rough, rough evening, but thank you.
Taking a lot of photos though. There you go.
HR has a special little pin for 15 years of working for Crete County. We appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you very much.
Don't be a stranger. Come say hi. All right, it's this time of year again, huh, Joe?
Yep, I'm good. My voice looks here at that part. Joe Merrill, King of the Castle. And first of all, just want to say how enlightened it is to come here twice a year and say a pledge of allegiance and today having a prayer. You guys are great leaders and great government bodies that are something to look up to. I mean, I go to a lot of county meetings. I go to a lot of people. And it's just nice to see this in this community that God is still here and that we're still honoring the flag. And I just appreciate that.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we're just, again, we got our race coming up in June 1st. We've already got a full field of 50 cars, so we've got 50 racers coming in. And we're looking for a couple, two road crossings this time. And we're also thinking about reading all about you guys promoting the tourism. We're also thinking about possibly reaching out to you next year, maybe doing a parade lap on a Friday night from the fairgrounds or something, just to bring. Whenever people ask me that don't have a camper and where do we stay? I always send them down here rather than send them into Bend.
Thank you.
Just because this community really is supportive and I've always appreciated it. And I'd love to be a part of helping bring some more tourism down here.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. And how long have we been doing this now?
2020. So we had, that last year was our seventh race.
Yeah.
This is going to be our eighth one and it, we pulled the fall race off a lot better than the spring race. We had some problems. And we got some security guys out there blocking roads and keeping people off the course and keeping Juniper out of Juniper Acres. And things seem to be going smooth and having a good time. It feels like a family environment where everybody's having fun for a change. And that's exciting to put the energy in and see it come together.
Well, you've been, you've been a great partner this whole time. So thank you, Joe. And Brad, you good with everything? Okay, cool. We'll keep up the good work and thank you for all you do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think commissioners have just so we have been on commission, or excuse me, in the minutes.
Entertain a motion?
Brian?
I'll make a motion to approve Castle. What is it?
King of the Castle.
Yeah. Request for road crossings.
And I will second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, now on to Christina. Aaron. Oh, you're presenting your GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for 2024?
Okay.
Can we all come?
I guess we're all go.
We're all going to take other photos.
All right. Walking a little slow.
Oh, that's because I have two tons of hair with my back and not my knees.
Yeah, I've done that before.
Oh, okay. That's all you.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. You better get in the middle. You didn't get me on the side.
All right.
There.
Okay, all right. All right, mile, very big and wide. I'm taking a lot of photos as well.
Cool.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, this next one is approval of a grant for the wolf compensation and finance for 2024. Ellie Gage was going to do this, but she was, she had some other things going on. So she asked me to step in. The gist of it is we are, we were approved for our grant, which will provide payback to ranchers that lost animals over this last year from wolf kills. So I would prefer to not have the wolves around. But if we're going to have them, I'm glad that the ranchers are able to be compensated for their loss. And then the other part of the grant is for non-lethal tools, which we're going to have and be able to loan out to ranchers all over the county and have that asset for a long period of time, as long as those are kept in good shape. And I think the total was what, $14,000?
Yeah, $14,874.40.
Yeah.
Got to keep the 40 cents in there.
Really happy that we are going to put out some opportunity for ranchers to stop this again. Jump on a soapbox real quick, but when you look at the way that they're managing wolves in the east of 395, they are able to actually manage those wolves and west of 395, we're not allowed to because of, I don't know, rules. I mean, it's not even environmentally, the state and the federal government have said these wolves should be managed. There's plenty of wolves in these areas. So we're going to keep fighting to change those rules, but as those rules continue, we're very lucky to have Ellie in charge of the Wolf Committee and working for us to provide those dollars for those producers that lost the animals as well as these tools to hopefully deter the wolves from coming to their properties. So entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve the ODA Wolf Compensation and Financial Assistance 2024 Grant Agreement, number ODA-4518-gr.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Nicole?
Unless you want to do the mingle and music OSU mixer. No, I think.
That might be more fun, Nicole.
Well, this is going to be pretty fun.
Okay.
So, good morning. My name is Nicole Strong. I am the Central Regional Director for OSU Extension. It's nice to see you all again. I am here today to start a conversation. I'm not asking for a decision. But I just want to start a little conversation about how we're structured. And for context, we can advance if you want. I am one of six regional directors in the state of Oregon. This light green is the central region. So I have nine counties and one tribal office that I direct. And positions like Kim's are critical leadership positions to operate closely in community. I also want you to know that I'm not just an administrator. I don't know. Some of you I've known longer than others, but I've been in Oregon for 20 years and I've been working in Crete County almost that entire time. I was an extension forester for 15 years before I went to the dark side, as some people call it. So I care about Crete County. I care about the values that you care about your way of life. And I really appreciate our strong partnership over the years and I want that to continue. So I just want to frame that as we move forward in this kind of tricky conversation. So it always starts with our values. And we, the only reason extension is successful is because we are in community, listening to community needs, listening to community priorities and helping co-form solutions and programs to meet those needs. So our values, the first one is community-based. We're also highly accountable. We want to be very transparent and provide accountability. We want to be credible. And we serve all sorts of different kinds of people. Commissioner Hermarck and I were talking the other day about people who just want to learn how to garden or how to can. From serving those people to serving our fourth, fifth generation ranchers, we're here for it all. And we do everything in partnership and we want to be responsive. Hopefully we're proactive more than responsive, but we're responsive too. Maybe I should check. I'm just going to pull my notes, make sure I don't miss anything. So Kim is leaving and it's heartbreaking in a lot of ways because she has so much institutional knowledge. And she has seen extension evolve over 15-plus years. And I just wanted you to know that how I view this position and how OSU views this position is she, they are the heartbeat of our office. They're the hub. They connect all the programs. They create a sense of culture in the office. They connect us to engagement opportunities in the community. They, you know, sometimes we can get a little narrow-minded if we're a forester. We're not maybe thinking about 4H or if we're an ag person, we're not thinking about public health. And the office manager pulls all of that together. They also are on the ground handling day-to-day operations, client relationships, the finances, all of that. They're critical. This position is critical. So what I'm proposing, we think about, no decisions yet, is in 34 of the 36 counties of Oregon, Kim's position and support positions are OSU positions. Crete County and Malheur County, they're, don't look at Tim.
I'm just stretching my neck.
Crete County and Malheur County, they're still county position. I want us to think about whether that still makes sense for us. So if these people were to move to OSU positions, here's what would stay the same. Programming priorities would be based on local needs. That wouldn't change. The county would still approve the budget every year and the tax rate. We would still have an advisory board that informs programming priorities and funding priorities. You wouldn't be giving any extra money to OSU, all of our human resources, finance, administration, that all comes from state and federal dollars. So it wouldn't change any of that. The district, the things that are of the service district would remain of the service district. And things like closures would still be determined by local weather needs. And so the county, we follow the county on things like closures. And the role of this position would overall remain the same. Here's where there are some differences, the things that might change that might be worth considering. Those folks would become OSU employees. Everyone in the office would be, have the same employer, have the same HR policies, use the same financial system. OSU would provide all that support and backup in if there was need. I think one of the real key things is the financial systems. Actually, we have some redundancies in finances where our folks have to submit reimbursements to OSU and then they also have to submit it to Kim to get it processed through the county. So we have some duplication and process. And then also we have a lot of non-county funding sources. So a lot of grants, foundation funds. And right now we don't have the capacity to handle that in Crete County. We're using the Deschutes County Office Manager for non-county funded fiscal management. I mean, Gordon, how many indexes? Do you have six, eight?
Yeah, seven.
Seven, between six and eight is seven. So all of those, all of those fiscal. I was, you know. And with those grants comes overhead that's returned to the Crete County Org. So that's more funding that we can use here. But right now Gordon has to go out of county to get support in that. What remains? I would supervise the office manager position and then supports, office support staff would be supervised by the office manager and program, educational program support staff would be supervised by faculty. That would be a change. What would happen is y'all would approve a budget. OSU would submit a quarterly invoice for reimbursement just based on the budgeted amount. And then at the end of the year, when we close out the fiscal year, we send a letter with our cash reserves. If we didn't spend it all, we're very transparent about that. And then if y'all want it, you want to hold our savings account, we transfer it all back to you what we didn't spend. We also have a pretty cool online budget management system where like We also have a pretty cool online um, budget management system where like. I could pull up my computer right now and show you in like, less than five minutes what the Sherman County agent has spent on binders and pens. Um, we, we can pull monthly reports and thus send those to you. And you can like drill down to as minute a detail as you want, it's pretty. That helps us with our accountability and um, transparency. And then it helps faculty stay on top of their own budgets, they have their own activity codes and they can see where they're at, how much they've spent. Um, wait. Uh, let me just check, do, 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 you know. The A O M position especially is a liaison between the county and O S U and um. They always have had direct opportunity into professional development, but I think as O S U employees, I have a little more of a lever to pull. To encourage them to participate in leadership professional development opportunities um. In human resources, marketing, whatever is needed, as well as participate in events like um. I took county college a couple of years ago through A O C and it was so valuable to learn. Everything there and get to meet all, all the county commissioners across the state and I would encourage, actually. I'll just put a plug regardless of this person, this new office manager, if they're a county or employer, O S U employee, let's get them to A O C. Um, I think that's really important. The other changes is the I G A would need to be updated, I think. I, I think there's like three sentences that would need to change around employees. And then I don't know how that would impact the county internal fees, I know we pay human resources right now and so. That might be something that would be looked at. Okay. So, Creek County does an amazing job taking care of their employees, I was really impressed. With your salary rates, um, your benefits is, is really good. I, what I'd wanna assure you is that we also take pretty good care of our people, um. We try to, um, our starting salaries for office managers, the recommendation for initial offers is in that sixties. And then our um, education program assistants or administrative program assistants start in kind of the mid forties. Which is comparable to you all, but my hint is if we had county employees that were transferring to O S U and they were hired at a higher rate. As county employees, we would honor that. Uh, we pay ninety-five percent of core benefits, I think y'all are at ninety, so pretty close. And we have some additional programs that we offer our folks. Um, we have a pretty generous vacation and sick leave is separate, which does not cap. And um, there's no payout for that and then we have pretty good holidays. The, we also have a seventy percent staff tuition benefit. For either the employee or one family member at a time for any Oregon Public University. Do, 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 yes. So, I'm not really asking for a big change regarding how, what we do, what our values are, what our priorities are in the community. But I do want us to have a conversation around maybe some efficiencies that might be built. Um, and just keep weighing the pros and cons of one structure versus another. So, a discussion, this has been a monologue so far, so.
I, I met with Nicole last Thursday, Nicole, Tim and Kim.
Yep.
Kim and Kim, that kinda rhymes, um. And so I don't have any questions because we went over this, but I suggested Nicole come here so that the two of you could be. On the same page and so. There you go, I'm kinda throwing it to you two.
Sure, uh, I just don't think it's the, I mean, we're not, you're not asking to do it now, you're just saying at some point it might be great.
Well, with a new person is a good opportunity to consider like at the fiscal year, that's one point.
True.
That we might consider, thought, thinking about this.
I really like having them part of our community versus. The management of them being in our community versus O S U and I think you're awesome. But I think some of the other things that O S U does is not so awesome sometimes. And that's not just because I'm a duck.
The tuition discount is for any Oregon Public University, Commissioner Craft.
So, yeah, I, and I, if, if you were the top dog and you were running everything, I think it would be a totally different conversation. Because I respect you, I appreciate you, you've been part of this community for a long time. But I think once we move past you, I start to have some pretty serious disagreements. With some of the, some of the internal decisions that O S U makes and. That I, I don't think we need to get in, deep in depth into it today, but I just, I think that I would much rather see. Local people helping that person along and they're gonna be working with the local people and. If there are things that we need to work on, we'll be working with. People that live here locally, that are talking to people that live here locally and I, I just think that's the way to go.
I, what, I appreciate that and what I would love to do is um, keep chatting about what the concerns are and I can bring. Copper dogs and, cause I want them to hear those concerns as well. What, regardless.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm happy to tell anybody about this.
And, 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 and for the public, we're not talking just Kim's job, there's also Carmen who is our.
Yeah.
What, what would her official title be? Yes, so there's two county employees currently in the O S U office, I wanna make that clear, so yeah.
Yeah. Any, any concerns, questions that I should be aware of, Commissioner Barney?
So, this is the first I've heard of it, so.
Yeah.
I won't jump right out there and be negative or positive, I think that I have to do my due diligence and.
I appreciate that.
Look into that and then make some, make some decisions.
I wasn't asking for a decision today.
No, you weren't.
Crack the door open a little bit.
No, you did a good job.
No, it's interesting, yeah, you, you know, and I've been around you and seen you and working, I approve of you. I think you do a great job, you know, um.
Yeah.
But something to think about.
Yeah, something to think about.
It was interesting.
Oh, good. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
We'll stay in touch and yeah, this is perfect.
We have other stuff to work on in the interim.
Yes, and you may be called back again, so.
Well, good.
Alrighty, thank you, Nicole.
Thanks, Nicole. Kim's back. Is this gonna be your first of, last official interaction with the uh, the board?
Yes, will be. Good morning again, um, so we all know that part of my duties in this position are the Budget Officer. Um, and I am sorry, but leaving in the middle of budget season for extension. And I would like to recommend that Tim DeBoo um, become the Budget Officer, at least for this year. Tim's been my mentor for years and years and years and um, every year I go over the budget with him as I'm preparing it. Gives me great input and he knows way more than I do about that, so I highly recommend that you appoint him as the Budget Officer.
Okay, very good, good idea.
And is Tim acceptable to this position? You didn't run out of the room.
I'd be happy to help the county and the service district complete that process.
And I make a motion to accept uh, Tim DeBoo as the Creek County Ag Extension uh, Budget Officer.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Brad?
Good morning, Commissioner, I'm Brad Haynes, Creek County Road Department. I'm here to uh. Ask that the ca- commission take the million dollar overreach for the. Federal grant for the stiff funds and put it in the twenty-five, twenty-seven uh, budget.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
I'd entertain a motion.
Some of his request.
I second that.
The, the only question that would, guess maybe I would have is that, there are two funds. Or there not?
Yeah.
Which fund would we want to put these in, which fund would? Cause we started a new one, we have two of them.
Says we have three choices, one or the other, or split them into both plans. What would be your suggestion on that, Brad?
I suggest to put the uh, full amount into the twenty-five, twenty-seven plan for future.
You wanna amend your motion or specifically say to that plan?
Um, yeah, so it'd be the twenty-five, it'd be the S T I F plan.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to put the funds into the S T I F plan.
And I will second that amended motion or amendment.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Brian.
Rick?
Hello, um, my name's Rick Treven, I'm the uh, Community Mental Health Director for Creek County and C E O Best Care Treatment Services. And um, so there was a request to discuss um, funding amendment um. Zero two six zero zero seven dash one, um. And uh, my apologies to the audience and to the minute taker, this is very obscure and incredibly boring if it's not your budget. So, um. Oregon Health Authority's um, budget amendment process. Is uh, at best to uh, described as obscure and their documentation of their amendments can be very obscure. But I've never found them to be openly misleading. So that's sort of the key thing here and so the amendment is um. Takes away roughly half of the funding for aid and assist. And so aid and assist funding, uh, the service element four. Is uh, for when people um. Have been arrested and uh, they're brought to court, but they are found to be unable to aid and assist in their own defense. Right, and so traditionally they have been um, the losses that they should be. Uh, sent to the state hospital until they have been treated to the point where they can aid and assist in their own defense. Uh, and at this point, the state hospital is uh, filled entirely, almost entirely by people on aid and assist. There is no civil commit access to the state hospital in Oregon at this point. And so uh, the state, this is a crisis, they're under um. A court order to get people out within ninety days, um, and uh. They have routinely failed and so the state has um. Move building more beds, which is really what they should do, they have invested heavily in community programs across the state. Um, and um, to help beef up what we're able to do at the community level for people under aid and assist. And so what we've done. In, in uh, Creek County is uh, really combine our funding for aid and assist. Um, those uh, those folks with um, under the psychiatric security review board. Which is another forensic oriented um, funding and our jail diversion funding. To really develop um, intensive outreach and engagement for these folks, which is um. Really the best that you can do and locally, um, we all know these people. They're, they are not strangers, the police um, and the sheriff's department know them very well, we know them well. Um, the emergency rooms know them well, th- they are um, ninety percent are local folks. And so, um, so I was initially surprised when uh, this amendment came through. Um, but. If you look at the amendment. Uh, the explanation is uh, pretty critical and so. Under the explanation, does the following conditions apply to funds as indicated. Uh, and special condition number in column nine. And so each special condition is set forward and so. Explanation is that the special condition. Number M zero seven nine two, I told you this was boring, uh, in base agreement, um. Uh, regarding um, M H S four and services applies. So you can go back to the original contract and find that. And the financial assistance and the, and the language in the next two parts are straight out of the base agreement. And that the um, that the funding would be distributed to the county in one lump sum. Within thirty calendar days after the date of this agreement becomes executed. And so then if you look back at how the funding's being distributed, is being distributed every six months across the biennium. And what they're taking out is the new funding and not our original funding and so what they need to do. This is what I believe they're doing is they're uh, taking the funding out of the six months distribution and will turn around. Within thirty days and redistribute it as one lump sum. So, um. Uh, which would be in agreement with uh, what was in the base agreement. So that's what I believe is going on, I have. Called, uh, emailed, multiple contacts, um, have not. Gotten a reply, I've talked to A O C M H P about this and they said. There are no cuts happening to the, the, the same assist funding, but there have been multiple mistakes. Um, and so I believe what's happening is that this was a mistake in how they distributed the funds and that they're attempting to correct it.
This was originally on the consent agenda and because it was a hundred and eighty-five thousand. I asked for it to be put in open discussion and then I talked to Rick at last week at Health Council and he told me that it took him a week. To understand this, so I wanna thank you for taking your week of understanding and bringing it. Because I felt the sum of the money, we needed to be careful, that we weren't losing anything. And I really appreciate your explanation and coming here and presenting that test.
I, I think it was a very fair question and um. I've been a Community Mental Health Director for twenty-eight years and it's taken twenty-eight years to really understand. Their permutations and. And, and, and frankly, and just to put in the record, um. There's a lot of the contracting that the documentation over the years has been very, very poor out of the state. And so, how some of this money flows through. At this point is dependent on that I've been at it for so long, I was in the room when that decision was made. And um, like why does half of our mobile crisis funding come through Deschutes County? No, I was in the room when that decision was made, I disagreed with it. But um, no one else, including the people at the state, understand why it flows like that, so. There's these little landmines out there, um, that. Um, when I eventually retire, no one really will understand. Why things are looking like they're doing because the documentation is just not there, so.
It looks like you can't retire.
Yeah.
That's just the way it goes.
Yeah, well, I, you're not a role model, uh, Commissioner.
Okay, well, I was hoping, I was just gonna get that, there we go.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope, thanks, Rick.
Thank you, thank you again, Rick, for coming, I really appreciate it.
Entertain a motion?
I don't think there's, uh, needs to be a motion on this, do you or?
Yes.
Oh, there does, okay, well. Okay, so I moved. Okay, but we're getting the money back.
Yes.
I uh, moved to approve Amendment One to Community Mental Health Funding Agreement Number zero two six zero zero seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right, consider approval to enter into contract with a recruiting company for a county manager position.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Christina Hannigan, Human Resources, oh, sorry. Uh, Christina Hannigan for Human Resources for Creek County, um. So we are at the, the point in our process where we have received four uh, proposals for the recruitment form of choice for our county manager. Manager search, you've all had. You've all had a chance to review those. Thank you very much. We understand that the consensus is to move forward with GMP as our recruiting firm of choice. So we're just seeking your approval to enter into that engagement.
Sounds good.
Perfect. You have my approval.
Entertained a motion? Oh, no motion, just approval?
No, I think you should have.
Okay. Did you entertain a motion?
Make a motion to, um, enter into agreement with, um, GMP Consulting for the recruitment of the county manager.
And I second it. And I like that they put the picture of the courthouse on here.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Eric?
Thank you.
Brad?
Thank you, Christina.
Yeah, thank you, Christina.
Commissioners, uh, what you have in front of you are, uh, two interrelated documents. Um, the first is an order where the county court would make a series of findings that would justify what's called a sole source procurement. I usually don't like sole source procurements. I think the public's generally better served by a competitive process. But in this case, um, for the reasons described in the order, I would recommend that the county approve, Order Two Thousand Twenty Four, Fourteen. For many years, going back, I want to say more than a decade, the county has used a company called Capital Asset and Paving Services to create a digital database of, uh, about 550 road miles in Crook County. Um, that digital database is used for a variety of different purposes, uh, related to maintenance, um, potentially if there's need, accident reconstruction. Um, and to allow for the road department to plan for future maintenance budget needs. Uh, you have here the order and you have two contracts, um, for their, uh, related services. They are substantially the same as what the county has approved two years ago. Um, and two years before that, there is a modest price increase, um, but it is in line with what we have seen with recent inflation. I can answer any sort of questions you might have on the order. If there are any questions about the technical aspects about what they do, I'd have to punt that question over to Brad.
Yeah, no, I, I just want to kind of hear Brad's thoughts on it. I'd also, I'd like to hear just Brad's thoughts on it and.
Yeah, if we go to a different, uh, type of company, it could be a total, um, start over from the beginning type of, um, index for our, our roads. And this, they have a good history with us and, uh, they've been around a long time. They do a good job. And we do use it for some of our budgeting and some of our areas where we need to put boots on the ground to look and see where we need to have road maintenance done. So.
Okay, great. Suzie?
I have no questions at all.
So what I might recommend is, uh, two separate motions. The first would be a motion to approve Order Two Thousand Twenty Four Dash Fourteen, uh, regarding the sole source procurement, uh, for capital asset and paving.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
And then a second motion to approve the contracts with capital asset and paving as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
All right. Andy, you have an administrator's report?
Yeah, thank you. That was, uh, Mr. Landau talking with him. Uh, yeah, based on his advice, we want to go ahead and cancel the executive session. At four thirty and I'll talk to you after, uh, this meeting to talk about how we schedule that, uh, at a later date. Okay? All right. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Do, do we have an executive session?
Yeah, I have a couple of things under the Commissioner's update. Uh, yesterday I received a letter or a request, email request from Core Three. Um, they're looking at going after some FEMA emergency operation grants and would like our, um, letter of approval and, uh, help with that. So, um, we have a letter drafted, um, to our representative, uh, in Washington DC, to help with this Core Grant that I would like to get signed today.
And everybody, the Core Grant is something, it's a training area for fire and police in Deschutes County at the Redmond Airport. It would help regionally to help train our fire law enforcement.
Yeah, it's a, it's, will be part of BPST, um, which is the training for law enforcement. And it's, uh, it was originally, you know, set up for, for a FEMA backup for cascade events or any emergencies that occur in the valley. And because of the airport and its location, but it'll also be, um, it's, it's kind of grown. Um, it was from that to, um, it's going to be kind of a, uh, police services, training area, fire service, training area. Also, um, it's going to be a lot of federal agencies, Bureau of Land Management, Forest Service, State, whoever's in law enforcement, whoever's in fire. Um, so it's a pretty big deal. That's, uh, really going to be a benefit, you know, to our area. It's a kind of a tri-county, um, investment and, uh, we're kind of participating on it from the sidelines a little bit, um, and showing our support.
Sounds good. Do you want us? Are we approving?
Yeah. So we're gonna do a letter. Do I need to make a motion to prove it or do we just?
Yes, I would.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we, uh, sign the letter of approval to support, uh, Core Three.
And I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
No.
All those, the only thing I would say is, do we want to send this to Cliff Benz too, or just Lori Dreamer?
Just Lori Dreamer. I mean, we could send it to whomever, but the request from Core was for this, they're working with this party.
I guess it is over in the district. Okay. Yeah. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anything else?
Commissioner update. Well, one of the things that I see Sean is in here, so I want to tell you. I went to Oregon Health Council last week and Pacific Source is going to get a source of funding from the state. They talk like it's big money. I'm not sure what it is, but there'll be three elements and one is going to be housing. One is going to be obviously mental health. And then one is going to be food. And since I attended your food insecurity, I'll just call that for Prineville. I'm very, very interested in going in there and trying to get as much money as I can. I'll have the armored truck drive up and be outside. So I just wanted to tell you I'm working on that and they have $5 million in shared funds, which again, I'm going to fight for that for us. So, uh, I, I thought that was kind of exciting that this new program's coming down and I was really excited about the fact that they actually were including food, which we know is such, you know, that's a big thing. And you go to the grocery store and you buy two things and it's $90. Uh, so I'm going to keep working, Shawna. Okay. Thank you.
So then I have one last thing. Um, here at a work session not too long ago, we were talking about the, uh, the Shu Tochiko Resource Advisory, uh, Committee and how it has to go through a whole federal process. And it's been a couple of years. Well, I got my certificate of appointment to this committee, uh, yesterday in the email. So, uh,
Good. All right. Uh, well, so we do have an executive session. Okay. So, uh, thank you, folks. This is the end of the regularly scheduled program and we'll move on to the executive session.
Thank you all for being here.
Uh, Crook County Board of Commissioners will now meet the executive session under ORS One Nine Two Six Six Zero H. The purpose consulting with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely be filed. Representatives of the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All their members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session except the stated or subject to sessions previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, return to open session, welcome the audience back into the room.